I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call this to order with the public hearing for the budget of 2024. We've got a budget estimate of $1,680,000. I'll try one.
Yeah, I didn't know if I gave you the breakdown or something, not the, but if anybody has any comments or...
I didn't, did anybody have any comments, board, made by the public?
The adoption will be in our next meeting.
Okay, alright, no comments, no questions? We will adopt this, our next public hearing, our next public meeting, so. Alrighty, well, let's move on to our, our regular meeting. Just wanted to say thank you to Nucor, they made a donation to the police department for transportation, or transporters, just like to say thank you to them again, so. Main Street would like for us to approve, for their approval to host the Santa Run 5K. Be December 2nd, assuming there's no issues with that.
They just wanted to make sure they had permission to host it.
Going down Virginia?
That is an old map, but that is the map that was sent to me.
Virginia down to Anderson, do the water station down on Lane, going down Eastwood, up Pine High School, down Howard.
Is that going to be the actual route then?
That is, that's what I was saying today.
Well, we'll make sure we post it, get it to the paper also.
Need more motion?
They just wanted permission to host their event, so you guys are good with it.
Good enough. Park Herald would like permission to use the parking lot again for their fundraiser during the festival. Anybody have any issues with that?
They hear anybody here?
No, she contacted me, she, Donna couldn't be here this evening, but I did tell her that I would check with you all to see if you were minded if they helped the same.
Nope.
Yeah, you'll want to prove that in case something were happening, your insurance associate was authorized.
I move.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, Roger?
Yes.
You ready?
If you are.
I am.
Those of you who don't know me, I'm Roger Smith, I'm the Park County Incorporated Board President, and then Nisa's our Executive Secretary. A couple of things I wanted to come to you, on behalf of our board, if you haven't noticed, the depot's getting chipped, all the paint's getting chipped off. We started a fundraising event about 10 days ago, I think, a month ago. We partnered with Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, and we're trying to raise $12,500, and they'll match that dollar for dollar, and then we'll have the $25,000. The chipping, repairing of the wood, and re primer, paint, the windows re-glazing, it's going to be about $21,000, $22,000. It's your guys' building as far as the town and the park, but my understanding in the rental agreement that we have, that we are to maintain it. So we're just throwing the information out there, if the town or the Parks Board would like to donate, to help cover the costs. Yeah, with Nisa, we reached out to other organizations and are doing some fundraising events, but the campaign doesn't end in about 20 days or so, and then that will close. But it's a real good, dollar for dollar, like I said, so we're just trying to raise that $12,500, then to cover the $25,000. Next thing was, it was brought up at our meeting about the restrooms at the depot during festival, the 10 days of festival. They belong to the park and the town, making sure that they're open, cleaned, supplied for the full 10 days of festival. We kind of heard that possibly it wouldn't happen on weekends because of staffing, so just wanting to figure out how we can have that taken care of through the weekend and the 10 days of festival.
So what's your thoughts on the weekends for the restrooms?
I didn't know, it's been a problem in the past. I know that we've had people down there at least once a day. I mean, ideally, it'd be nice to have someone down there a couple of times a day, but at least once a day minimum would be nice to have.
Those days I know it's a little busy down there.
We were, you don't mind, we were getting comp time and they were paying overtime. I was on call last year, I got called in three times a day. So we decided that it wasn't the town's job to pay us overtime to put toilet paper in the bathroom, that we could supply it and you guys could install it on the weekends, Monday through Friday, and then you guys could put it in on the weekends instead of us paying time and a half or somebody coming in there.
There's more to it than just the toilet paper, though. I mean, if you're going through that much toilet paper, you're going to go through that much.
We do that, I was in three times, and then we got to take the trash out, too, so we just...
And cleaning, and regular maintenance and everything, so you guys went from comp time to overtime?
Yep.
So you're not wanting to pay the overtime then, is that what?
Well, I don't see where the town ought to pay overtime for.
Yeah, only that's long and short of it, yes.
Could we work something out? Could a proposal be given to us to take to our board to see if we can help compensate the overtime on the Saturday, Sunday? It's just an idea, I, we need someone to clean it and stock it, it's four days.
Are you, I mean Nick, that we literally couldn't do that, could we, as far as compensation?
Might be better off just contracting that service out for the weekend than to pay the town employees time and a half.
So could we, so you're saying, say to you, we just paid you and you come in on the weekends, even you're a town employee, but you're just working for us, is that what you're saying, Nick?
I, so you guys, PCI could contract with whoever you wanted to, I mean, as a service provider to come do that. It'd be cheaper than paying a town employee salary at time and a half. That number's going to be drastically cheaper than whatever the town could possibly do, because you guys have already used up your hours before the weekend, so if it's running through the town, it's going to be something a lot more expensive than what the going rate for that is.
Basically like an independent contractor agreement?
That's what I would do if I were you guys, because it's going to be cheaper than...
Then it would be up to them if a town employee would want...
They could literally contract with whoever, because it wouldn't be under the town's insurance as an employee.
Well, one more alternative, just since we're talking alternative. We could see if there's a town employee that, of course, I don't know why they would volunteer, but they could take, instead of working that solid week, they could work those four days and not work some days in a week.
Yeah, just schedule a just there five days, Sunday through Sunday.
Like maybe, I don't, who, you did it last year?
Does Pam still...
Pam still works. I was on call last year, and I know I was in three times to pick up trash, because they would call and say they're out of toilet paper.
You can't mandate that they do it, they'd have to volunteer.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying you shall do, but I'm just...
But the thing is, if a guy takes a couple of days off to work Saturday and Sunday, what's he going to do all day, just wash the bathrooms?
Well, you have bathrooms, perhaps there could be some trash, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing out an idea.
I'm just, no, I'm just asking, I mean, because a lot of, I mean, what are you going to, you want to pay him something all day and he's going to be limited what he can do by himself?
Well, who takes care of the trash in the square?
PCI handles it, the trash cans we put out, we...
Yeah, okay.
And we do the corners.
So we just figured they could go down and put toilet paper and pick up trash. And we do it up to 3:30 on Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And we just supply the closet down there will be full of supplies, so they could just, that's...
We're open to options, we just, we can't not have that bathroom cleaned and stocked. There's tons of visitors that go through there. If it's a mess, if there's no toilet paper, then they come to the depot and we've got a single bathroom that's...
Well, like the people that pick the trash up on the square, could they not go down and do that?
They're pretty much circulating the whole time, and it's hard to go...
We've got, between that and they also, we have them go through and vendors need breaks and stuff, they help do that stuff, too.
And they, and they check our porta potties, because that's only a doctor.
Our porter potty, my in-laws run a parking lot in Bridgetown, and our porter potty provider usually provides somebody to do that service. I don't know, it might be something, whoever does the porter potties, or you guys, you might ask them if they have somebody who provides that service, because we've had that in the past at our parking lot.
It may be that we have so few that...
It might be, I guess, I don't know, it doesn't hurt to ask probably, just an idea. Because they threw that in, we have like 14 or so parking lot, they come service them during the meeting, but...
Well, I guess we have no, no decision right now.
Well, I don't have a problem with if somebody wants to volunteer.
Yeah, I mean, you could ask, I mean...
I guess we'll take that on, but...
I can ask if somebody, you know, if they want to pay, somebody down there that wants to, like say Pam wants to do it, come in, three of you guys can decide what you want to pay her, she might do it. There might be another guy there that would want to do it, but...
We're open to options, we just want to make sure that...
I'll bring it up in our morning meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
I think I have your, I have Nisa's.
Get with Nisa and then we can discuss it at our next meeting here in a couple of weeks and figure it out.
We're not trying to be difficult, just trying to...
No, it's alright, but we just, I don't want to post a number over there, contact the town for cleaning the toilet paper, because it is the park bathroom, but we just want to make sure it's in good shape for the visitors that are here.
Who does the county bathroom?
The county custodian, that we compensate his extra hours worked on the weekends and after hours.
The dog one? Does it take him all the time, is he there all day?
Yes.
Confluent?
For the full 10 days.
In my experience with those bathrooms, we park cars to co-op. I mean, people come out there, they're on fire, nothing bad, you know, train wreck, that poor little gal at the depot. But it is something, you're not just, you're just being on call, you're coming, if you were the guy on call, you get called to come over there, it's a train wreck by the time you get there.
Two years ago on a Saturday, there ended up being somebody that sat there all day because it was so busy and there was so much turnover of trash.
I would take, I would say it's going to be a long day.
Jeff let Pam do that, but I don't see where the, as a town citizen, I don't, I don't see where a town should have to pay somebody that sat there all day myself, but Jeff did let Pam do that two years ago.
Well, I'd say first thing, your morning meeting, number one, see if there's any volunteers.
Right.
And that'll, if not, we can move on from there and then...
Okay, just let us know, because festivals not that far away, so. Of course, we got to go through our board and all that and get approval and...
So when's your next, when's your meeting?
Uh, two weeks, the third Wednesday of the month. And then we can get back with you guys and let you know, hey, we've got it under control, we're going hire so-and-so from your department, or we're going to go off an outside service or whatever. If you guys are good with that, I mean, we didn't, we didn't want to step on any toes and just hire someone to take care of it, because it's not really our position.
And in case of issues, you know, toilets break down, or water issues or whatever, I would assume that that would still be...
That would still fall under the town call guy.
Yeah, and somebody could still respond to that if needed?
Yes, yes, you're in that same, it's just the calling, a call guy you had at time and a half to put six rolls of toilet paper on and pick up trash is...
Easy, man.
Got to really dedicate their fur.
Yeah, so...
Okay, we'll just let you say that.
I'll get ahold of her tomorrow.
Okay, and then we'll go from there.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing, we do need to make a vote and accept our renewal for our 2024 insurance. Our plan, if we stay on the same plan, nothing does change there. As far as coverage deductible wise, although we will be incurring a 7.1 rate increase, I believe last year it was about a 4% decrease, so the increase really from the last year isn't all that much. But if you have any questions, I do have the plan packet here, like I said, there are no changes in coverage deductible, out-of-pocket, anything like that. But we do need to get back to them by the 15th with a decision if we're going to move forward with the same plan that we're on.
Well, I move unless somebody has a chance.
Second.
Is that a second?
Mm-hmm.
On the table?
Got claims in the amount of 201, 849, 35, just nothing really standing out, I think we caught all the big ones, though. Flashed to approve.
Second.
On the table?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm so glad you shut up.
Okay, we do have some leftover adjustments after balancing our banks from the summer with the pool, so there's $69.21 of credit card pool receipts that need to be approved, please.
Make your motion.
Second.
Did somebody second that?
Yeah.
I can't do that, so, all in favor?
Aye.
I do that all the time, too.
I do have the whole complete memorandum of agreement for the energy assistance program, but it's crucial that we continue that program for the customers that we have, so if there's any questions or anybody wants to review this agreement, nothing changes. Guidelines are still the same with energy assistance, customers are free to apply with energy assistance if they qualify, and energy assistance does deposit that money into our bank account, we apply those deposits to the customer's account.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the time and a half for you guys overtime?
I did have one more, Cindy was unable to be here, but we needed to update our resolution where we made some match money changes for our Ogra grant. So we do have a rundown real quick, 286, 392, 38 for our water improvement fund, 263, 603 from the town water operation fund, it's going to be $500,000 as a loan from the light cash reserve to the town water fund, 516,364 from our ARCA funds, there is a $2 million 10 loan, 10-year local finance with our bank, and then we did have $20,400 of ineligible items that are going to be paid, but that's included in the total overall project of $3,566,359, 38. That will be resolution 2023-10.
Make a motion.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
I'll be providing that copy, oh, oh, I'm sorry, everybody doesn't need to sign that.
Over here.
Yes, please, thank you. I'll get that copy to Cindy tomorrow along with, I did update a new letter from the town that Dave and I both signed, as well as the bank did provide a new letter with that interest rate change lowered to 5.34. So all of that information will be sent to Cindy to forward on to Ogra. Thank you.
You ready?
Yeah, so we resolved three of our ordinance violation cases. I had one specifically I wanted to talk to you guys about, though, before, and see what your opinion was. We received a judgment against the Fast Pace Surge and Care Center there on 41 as to that back lot area where the grass was really tall. They had talked to Brandy and they actually, I guess, mowed it the very next day after the court date, and now they're asking about possibly getting relift from the judgment as a $2,500 fine. So before approving that, I kind of thought maybe the board ought to weigh in on that and see what your thoughts are on it.
Should we wait till mowing season's over to make sure they continue?
So I believe the next fine's going to be $7,500.
If they violate again, yeah, it's an escalating fine, but they never responded, never showed up for court or anything, so I just asked for the maximum on the first violation. Since then, they've been in contact with Brandy regularly, I think, and I think it's still mowed, but...
And not, not to make an excuse for them, but I do believe that those citations were going to the property owner, which is not Fast Pace, they leased that property from a corporation of California. So I think that if the property owner wasn't communicating with Fast Pace, I don't believe that they actually ever received that citation, but they were more than willing to make sure that it's taken care of.
Well, and so the property owner would be the one that would be responsible, but I don't have an issue with that, I just thought it was something the board probably ought to sign off on instead of Bill or I making that call.
Okay.
I am too, I mean, we do that for everybody, I mean, if they correct us problems, we take care of it.
Yeah, we've got their attention, they know they need to do it, or the costs can go up, so I'm okay with it.
But it doesn't release them from the next fine, if they do.
No, we're not waiting on permanent, it's just, right now, it's a judgment against them and a lien on the property. So this would be relieving the lien from the property and the judgment, kind of unwind what we had done, but it doesn't make it so that the next time around, they don't get the bigger fine.
The lady I speak with at Fast Pace, she, she did tell me today that they do have an opening date set for September 25th at that location.
Really? That's nice.
Staffing had been an issue, she said that's been resolved, and they did push back their open date, but I can't say that it happened, but that is what she told me today.
Well, Jen, what I talked to on that moment said, too, one of the reasons was it wasn't getting mowed in the back, because the contract I have is for just a certain amount, this property's bigger than the other properties, so the mowers said, "We're not mowing the back until they increase the property." Okay.
You say one motion.
I do want to motion, yeah, because it's official action.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll unwind that fine then in the judgment. Our next court date's September 12th, and then we have September 26th and October 3rd. I think in between then and Bill will probably talk about this, I think they're doing inspections again on the 15th, so we may have more violations, hopefully not, but just so the public at large knows that they're doing inspections on the 15th, so please mow your yard, you can work the property. I'd say Bill's billing in some time, but that's all I have.
Bill?
Speaking of inspection, they're no out of order, we'll actually be starting those the week, next week, before the 15th, because the statute ordinance says week before and the week after. So we'll start that week, we'll do inspections. People have questions, I, we'll afford them to call and ask. And sometimes we go there and serve these and no one's home, we leave the citation on the door because we can't get a hold of them, and we're more than happy to talk to them, if they're willing to work it out, we're willing to work it out with them. The ultimate goal is just to get 30 yard up to standard and not depreciate the value of all the other people's properties or have unwanted varmint coming in because of the tall grass and weeds and whatnot. Transport cells, I ordered some parks, we've got a donation from Montezuma Police Department for the pool car. We had to order some parks, they are now here, so in the next week or so, we should have the, that transport cell on that one. And next week sometime, they should be ready to install the transport cells for the couples.
Good deal.
Is that the last of them?
Yeah, that'd be all, all, all seven vehicles will be, have transport cells. And then the last thing I have is homecoming parade on the 15th, and they'll be coming from, unless things change because of construction, my understanding is they're going to be coming from the park down High Street, across Jefferson Street, up Stark Street, and go into the high school.
Would you, will you add your, the cleanup day?
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, the 23rd is cleanup day, so that's an important day, speaking of inspections. If you have, you know, prop, if you have like mattresses, couches, recliners, all that kind of big stuff that's going to be hard to get rid of, that the town will accept, is my understanding, then bring those down, Doug, are you guys going to be able to, I don't know, I think there've been that in the past where people weren't able to bring stuff?
If they can get it out to the road, or in their garage, or just on the driveway, what do you want, in our house or not?
Right, right.
Yeah. So they'll need to call in and leave addresses, and Brandy will get that to us?
Don't we have a tox away day coming up, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is Saturday, the 16th. 16th, that was it.
Yeah, pretty much anything you've got in your yard to be cleaned up now.
That's right, they, those days are, they're all kind of working together.
No TVs, though.
It's like $50 next year.
Something like that, yeah, but, yeah.
About air conditioners?
Only find out.
And then give them the dishwasher.
Is that on the tox away thing? I think you have pay-up fee for some items.
Yeah, I think TVs like 20 bucks. I don't know about other things.
Their thing is just probably like TVs for you all, probably.
Just, beware of people with free TVs at yard sales, because that's a sneaky way to avoid $20. Speaking from experience. Yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Fire beware.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just, I've got just a little bit, some updates here. Sean Atkins, I talked to him today, he will be in either tomorrow or Thursday to lay out the building cemetery so we can get the hose back, and it will start the building next week. Everything with Sean is, is the work out at the water plant, we need to, the only, we never did with the other bid, so the money we got was from him, $4,500 to do the roof repair and the soffit and all that out there, so we need to approve it or...
I would, or... I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the concrete on, everything on two of Lane has been bored except for Hoffins, and that will be done Friday, along with Harris Street, and maybe part of York and Michigan may be get done a little bit Friday, too.
I think so, yeah.
So those are all done, like I said, for those, but we're doing that Friday. Water line's been installed in the parking lot, electric goes in tomorrow and Thursday, and they plan on block tossing that next week, so...
And the chargers?
Yes, well, we got to put the pads down, then the company actually comes in and installs them.
So what's up with that Main Street sign, I saw they had a grid out there, rebar, but they...
That, that grid rebar was left over for the clock.
Oh, okay.
They didn't have room for all of it, but it's like three foot by three foot.
Who's pouring the pad for those?
My understanding, I guess, I guess, we're going to...
We are?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was funny they didn't do it last week, but...
Yeah, because it's not there, I brought up to Dave when I got here a little early, the location of the sign, they, they didn't want it behind the clock, which I agree on that.
Well, it's going to be in the north side of the entryway facing east of...
Yeah, they wanted it right next to entryway, but talking to Dave and some of, we got here, and Chris, that after looking at it, we felt like it needs to go on the other side of the water meter, away from the entryway a little bit, not right next to the sidewalk.
Well, you could put it on. So...
They originally said the north side.
It's going to be on the north side, this part of the road. It's gonna be on the north side, this part of the north.
Just a little further away from...
That way it doesn't interfere with our water meter.
Yeah, I was talking, entryway into the lot, walkway into the lot.
Yeah, they picked out right there, looking at Dave, we felt like it would go over just a little bit further north on the other side meter. It would look a little better, not right up next to the entrance. Yeah, so...
You're going in north, you said, uh, not south, not east or west. So you'll block a view.
Right, yeah. Okay. So that's, that's what we looked at today, so... So, but other than that, that's the only thing I had that needed to get approved on any purchases this week.
Oh, a question about dirt. Where are we gonna come up, we're gonna have to come up some dirt, right? Fill in the north section. Looks like you got plenty of dirt in the south section, but the north section looks like it's a little shot in dirt.
Yeah, I assumed they were putting it in along with the dirt they got.
Well, I think most dirt they put in there is what they dug out for the clock. I was just curious, do we, you know, we need a little dirt, and we're doing the landscaping, correct? We won't have a lot of time before the festival. Are we putting river rock down? They're gonna plant in that someday, or what's the plan there? Have we thought about that? We don't want dirt, the dirt, we know that, the bear.
Well, that's gonna go in accordance with the grant, that maybe is...
Yeah.
As far as the landscape. So you're seeing the temporary...
Well, I mean, temporary, just throw some river rock on top of it and it won't be a mud hole.
I mean, we got plenty of dirt, like the cemetery or down here, we could fill it up so high, you know, and then, like you said, I don't know what the plans are with the board of rock or what they want.
It's like Brandy said, we, you know, we're looking at the grant for that.
Yeah.
I mean, but I would rather use mulch or something that can be tilled under. I mean, if we want to change it to rock later, we can after the landscaping.
Yeah, just something on there.
Just something that, yeah, will drag to the mud.
Yeah.
I mean...
Okay, sounds like a plan.
I mean, it works for me.
You gotta pick out the mulch or just put any mulch?
I would just get the cheapest, I mean...
Something from like the bears.
Well, we're gonna till it in anyway. Why don't you just use it just down at the yard?
Except that it won't be filled with weeds and stuff.
I mean, just something to cover, just keep from dragging that on the sidewalks and the parking lot.
They're just gonna till it in.
Yeah, we got a bunch of them.
Yeah, it's free.
We have to kind of dig through and get some stuff here and there, but that would top it. If you're just gonna till it in, that would work. We can take some dirt from the cemetery, get up so high as to put that over.
Is that all you got, Doug?
I believe that's all I got.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Brandy, you wanna fill us in on the...
Uh, yeah, I just wanna highlight a few of the things that maybe changed. I had South Market, that a pre-disturbance meeting was gonna be with NDOT tomorrow morning, but I did get an email late from the project manager, from the engineer, that they've canceled that. I haven't spoke to him to see why. I'm assuming someone with NDOT wasn't able, which NDOT must attend that meeting, so... But I also included, once the schedule's complete, obviously, the engineer will forward that to the town. So we're kind of just still on a hold on South Market. 41 North, that completion date is passed of August 14th. I believe, I spoke with Doug and he's gonna attend the September 7th, Thursday morning, 9:00 a.m., scheduled to be on site for the opening. So that may take a few hours for them to get all of that hooked up, but after Thursday's date, we should be able to move forward with the 41 North lift station and hookups. Parking lot, I think somebody already covered. The curbs were complete. The clock pad's gonna be done. And then Doug mentioned possible paving next week if all goes well. And then the only update, I think, since then, on our OKRA award, it has been awarded to BNT during inch, and Cindy and I will continue to move forward on the documents needed for that. I think that's really all the updates that I have for any ongoing projects.
On that?
Right now.
On that, that OKRA grant, or, well, who got that? BNT? Do they have any start date?
I haven't, I haven't talked to them. I mean, Cindy and I will need to get together and see.
Have we been awarded the money from the state? Have we actually received the money from the state?
We have not received it. And she has, she needs the documents we signed today to send to OKRA before we can do a release of funds.
BNT hasn't said anything about starting.
And we can't issue a notice to proceed until we get those funds to OKRA too, as well. So within the next week, two weeks maybe, by the next meeting, we should have them maybe from BNT. I will check with her on that, though, when she gets those documents.
Well, you have anything, Roy?
No, sir.
Any other business you want to talk about? Any new business we want to talk about? We have any public comment? Yes, sir?
Excuse me, I have to be up here. I just up here before, I got the property down here at 410 Primrose Drive, and the stormwater is washing me out. It's happened for over 20 years. In the back, I was with the foundation. I've never had any cracks in it. In the last two or three weeks now, I've got two cracks. One of them goes clear at the top, comes down, and gets almost two, three blocks before it gets to the bottom. Never seen this before, but it patched part of one of the cement blocks where the crack was. And the crack goes clear down to the footing and goes through the footing. And I talked to a previous name, he's a week, yeah, talked about putting it off to this fall. And I was down there this morning, first afternoon, and you can see the pipe, the draw running and everything. There was a 12-inch pipe coming out of the hill. And when I first bought it, there was a drain out of eight, eight or 10, I don't know what it was, come out. And they put riprap on it, I don't know, two or three times or something like that. There is no riprap even around down there now. And I know this 12-inch pipe went there when I first bought the property. The pipe walked down to it, measured pipe, it's 12-inch plastic pipe. And from that drain down to the ground is an eight-inch drop, I mean, eight, eight-foot drop. And it's just like, when water's coming out of that eight to 12-inch pipe, going down eight foot and hitting the ground, it's just about like taking a fire hose and shooting at the dirt. If there was riprap there, it must be down to the railroad by now. And I walked on down further and went to banks and measured down to where the water runs. And it's eight foot deep that it's washed out down through there. So something needs to be done, and it might be done right away, because if not, I'm afraid that back wall is gonna give way, and when it does, it's gonna wreck everything. So all I have to say is, the state passed a law, you can't run waters across the property and cause damage for your life and property, so I'd like to get something worked out with the town before we have to do the thing or something else.
Doug, can you...
Well, when I was down there, what he's talking about, that's 20 some feet away from your basement. The erosion up by your house would be coming off the roof, not, not this, because that's, I mean, that's at least 20 feet from your house. That still has grass and everything that's growing.
I know it does.
And so it's not, it wasn't pushed over from water or nothing, but I saw the foundation you're talking about when we was there, and that's coming off the roof. That's washing that all the way from there. I mean, I don't think if I put riprap in the creek, it's gonna stop that erosion.
If you take the hill and erosion, take the hose and spray down through there, and you start moving that dirt, that dirt's gonna settle, right?
I totally understand that, but you still had, there was no settling up by your house other than what was coming off the house.
It's the only vehicle, because I haven't had that cracked. I've had it for over 20 years. This is the first time it's cracked. There was one big tree that was on the north side, and it was, water was coming underneath there, washed it out, washed it out. And you seen it, they finally washed it out, it fell to the south, across, back across the little stream there. So it is washing that bank out, and that bank with all that pressure is slowly settling. And one of these days, it's, well, you went and took a picture where it goes back in the hill somewhere.
So is the pipe shooting towards his house or is it parallel?
No, it kinda shoots at an angle, but you know how a creek will turn and all that. It is taking some out, but he still has 20 foot of solid ground or better, from the edge of his house to where it's eroding. What I saw in Britain, in Britain I talked about today when we knew he was coming, all the erosion we saw around his foundation is coming from no gutters on the house, and the water's running down and washing the bottom out of the way. There's still solid ground and grass and everything there. Now, I ain't saying down the road, we don't need to put some riprap if we can get to it. We could do it this week if we had time or could get to it, but it's not gonna stop what he's talking about. It's coming off the house.
From the end of that pipe to get past his house, what would, I mean, what's that look like?
It's just a washed out period coming.
How's the distance? Not what you're asking?
Yeah. Oh, it's quite a ways where it comes off the road from his cabin. His is the second cabin. There's two cabins there, you know, his is the second one. So riprap in that creek is not gonna solve his issue. It's what's coming on. Britain and I both went down the next day and met him, and that's what we saw. And we discussed going back in, in November, when the leaves are gone, we got a better path to get there. We'd go back and look and see if we can get riprap there with the, just to help out, but that's not gonna solve what he's talking about.
Okay. Can we have Josh take down and take a look at it with you?
Yes, I will contact Josh in the morning.
He's our building inspector. Have him have a look at it.
We'll come.
Something's gonna have to be done with the water, because it's gonna keep washing. Because the riprap they put in there, I don't know if you guys dug the back out, maybe they made bigger tile there or something, but there's no riprap. I mean, it's there, it's been washed out. It's gonna keep washing, and it's back where we, because you can't wash it down here at the foot of the hill and not, something's gotta give up there, and it's gonna start settling and go down.
We got tons of concrete from sidewalks and jobs that, if we can get down there safely and in and out with our skid steer, we could eventually put some in there. That was what we were gonna look at this winter, when we can actually see what was going on and all that. I just don't think the issue he's having, we'll do it. We'll do it to keep it from washing, but it's not gonna solve the issue he's having.
What about, you're still gonna have the same amount of water if you have riprap in there. It's still gotta go down through there and...
But if I put it on that bank you're talking about, then it'll keep eroding away.
I hope it does.
Oh, my looking heart is not being rude to you today.
I told him to turn the lights off. That couldn't get him the permission.
Very well, town.
My God.
The heck is upon y'all?
Brad's out back with the brick.
Yeah, he's just out there cleaning.
So, but yeah, I'll get Josh. We'll go down a little bit.
I appreciate it, because if they don't, my cabin's gonna come down and somebody's gonna build me a new one or something.
Well, we'll get Doug and Josh back down there and see, you know, what they can come up with.
But I'm gonna see about getting an engineer to come in from here, just to see what he's...
Good.
Okay, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody? Paula?
Yes, so I was over at the commissioner's building. We're doing a fundraiser for the Reynolds family. The young man is 15 and has stage 3 lymphoma. So he's currently in Riley Hospital. I don't know how many of you know him. The police may know it's that, but that's a whole other story. So there was a family who didn't even know this family, but heard that this boy had cancer, she wanted to do a fundraiser. And she owns the Heavenly program that's on this side of the courthouse. She decided she wanted to do this fundraiser. I kind of jumped on the bandwagon with her because of my program. And then this whole fundraiser kind of outgrew us, is what's happened. So the commissioners did give us permission to use the courthouse lawn, and we were wanting to know if there was any way we could block off the street. I would like to block off the west side, since the two businesses that have joined in on us are on the west side. It makes sense to me to support that business and to make sure that that side of the street, and for safety reasons, we would block that side of the street off and use that side of the courthouse lawn.
She wants the entire street, both lanes blocked off?
I would think it would be best, but I didn't know how to go about that. So when we were in the commissioner's building, they said, "Y'all are meeting here at 5:00," so here I am. So sorry, I didn't get all the agenda, but here I am.
What's the date you want to do?
September 23rd. And it would just be a fair few hours that day. And I don't have the exact timeframe, because we don't even have a flyer made yet. It was just one of those things that we're like, "Yeah, we're gonna do this, and here's the date," and then it like just went.
So when you're talking a few hours, you're talking noon to 4:00, 4:00 to 8:00?
Yeah, 10 to 12, something like that. Yeah, it'd be like four hours.
What's the actual fundraiser?
So we're gonna have several of the businesses, like Worth Karma Corn, we have some folks from the marathon up at Key Yuga. They do cotton candy and they're gonna come down. The Heavenly Place is doing airbrushed tattoos. We have another group that is doing a blow-up something. I don't wanna say what, because I'm not even sure. And they're gonna bring it. And then we have someone who actually has a dump tank, so we're checking on insurances to see how we can put that together and if that can become part of our event. So it's like just being built as we go.
So you won't get more?
Exactly. The more the merrier for me, because this family, actually, when the child first got diagnosed, everybody was in Indianapolis over the weekend in their air conditioner. Something happened. I don't know, I'm not a electronic appliance. But it backed up and it caused black mold in their home. So now they're ductwork and some of their drywall, we've already tried to remove it, or we had someone try to remove it, and the mom lost her job because she's obviously not going to work. The kid had his first chemo treatment, had a reaction to that, and they've been at Riley ever since. So it's not a very pretty picture.
Do you have any kind of issues with it, Bill?
No. We've blocked off Jefferson Street before and not had any traffic issues or anything, and just be the opposite side of the courthouse.
Is it a Saturday?
Yes.
Same day as the cleanup?
Yeah, four hours. Shouldn't upset anyone too much, I wouldn't think. Pete's sake, it's a good cause.
Yeah, great conversation.
Is that side of the road enough for them for what you got going on?
I think it is, yeah. Like I said, we were planning on just using the sidewalk over there and doing a few things, and then it just went boom, 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 boom. And when Worth Karma Corn came in, I was like, "Well, I know how big his rig is, so that's gonna take a little bit of space." And I thought if we blocked off the road, we could even put in, and that other thing, like in the middle there where the parking spots are. So kind of like a bridge hustle.
There is one possible issue, that they do have people that live there. If you block off both sides, that limits where they can park. If you block off one side, then obviously they would still have an area to park. You might actually have better luck doing like the two inside streets, like the...
High and...
High and...
And market. I was thinking that might be better, I mean, you're not crossing over.
Instead of just that whole street, that way people that live there can still park where they live.
Got it.
Yeah, it might be, it might be better too. You got more vendors with power.
Might be easier to...
Over on this street.
That's up to you.
I was just thinking for safety reasons, and because of knowing that those two were gonna be the supporters.
Yes.
Walking back and forth across. And the courthouse sounded like we were fine to use water and electricity on that side too, so... I don't mind talking to the hotel. Let them know that, hey, for a few hours, we're gonna have a little street karma.
Yeah, the town's got outlets on that side. It's weird too.
I'm assuming you would, for somebody that was there till noon, if they wanted to out, you guys would help them out, get out, move down.
Absolutely, yeah, sure. I'm not gonna hold you by hostage in there. It's definitely...
$20 to make that.
You have to donate, and then we'll let you out.
$20 will make that.
Maybe they'll run that the whole way as they go down the street too, like you through here.
Uh, yeah, if you're willing to talk to the, you know, the apartments.
Sure.
Somebody wanna make a motion or...
Would it be better to wait till after cleanup to do it, or is it, you think it makes something...
I don't think cleanup will affect it.
Okay. If they're going anywhere, they're probably going on Jefferson Street or...
Yeah, I think Jefferson and everything. I don't think it'll affect cleanup at all.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Paul, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. And then this is my program. It's free to families in Park County. I don't know a lot of people that know about it, so I'm just handing out some flyers, and I'm just gonna leave those there if anybody wants them or needs them. I can also do car seat inspections too, so if you have some vendors that need some car seats, send them my way. Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Well, no other public comments or...
I just wanna make a shout out to Mark Richmond.
Do you drive through the old cemetery?
Yes. The S.D. Puitt, Monzuma, the big house like one. Have had broken windows for decades with kids. And Mark... And Mark, I said, "What can you do about that?", and he went, "Very good work for Lexane or Lex, some sort of thick plastics, they're all front and back rolled down." He's worked with Andy Willhite to put a better locking system so the doors won't blow open, so I did post something on Facebook, it's a big relative, it's Puitt, Ox, somebody else, I think it was Andy Snow, who's in Ox, to come take a look or give us some money.
Now, you guys, like I said, there a couple weeks ago, if you haven't been out to see that-
Possibly, God.
I mean, you oughta take a drive through there, they did a great job. So, wanna thank Monzuma for that.
I have a question.
Anything else? Someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Say it.
Paul, favor?
Aye.